Good afternoon, Regents. It is 1:00 PM on Tuesday, December 10th, and I'm calling the regular meeting of the Board of Regents of Delmar College District to order. Due to COVID precautions, we are meeting via video and audio conference, and we'll be live streaming this meeting. If you would please respond when I call roll. Regent Adami?
Right here.
Regent Everett?
Here.
Regent Bennett?
Here.
Regent Garza?
Here.
Regent Hutchison?
I'm here.
Regent Salinas? Regent Sherwood?
Here.
I am Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if you would please join me in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meeting and the college's website in real time with the exception of portions of the meeting as may be considered closed statute, posed session by statute. We did not have any public comments that were requested prior to the deadline today, and we will begin our meeting then with recognitions. We're excited to have several student recognitions, and we are sad that we can't do this in person, but nonetheless, we want to make sure that we give appropriate recognition to some of our faculty, staff, and students. So, Dr. John DeHalkum?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia. I'm honored to present faculty and students who have received recognition for their accomplishments. The first recognition acknowledges the work of one of our faculty members for her committed service as a Student Organization Chapter Advisor. Carrie Butler joined our college as an Assistant Instructor in 1998 and was hired as a faculty member of English in 2014. She is a tenured Assistant Professor. She was recognized by Sigma Kappa Delta for her 10 years of service as Advisor for the Epsilon Beta Chapter at Delmar College. We applaud her dedication and steadfastness in keeping the Epsilon Beta Chapter at Delmar College active and thriving. Sigma Kappa Delta has now grown to 145 chapters nationwide, and Epsilon Beta Chapter continues to be a leader among them. In addition to her valuable mentorship for the group, she also serves our developmental education students as our Coordinator of the Non-Course-Based Option for English. I have a certificate of appreciation from Sigma Kappa Delta that I will send to her. I don't know if you can see it, but they sent that with a nice little gift. I don't know what the gift is. I haven't unwrapped it. We'll leave it up to her to unwrap that, but she will receive those. And I'd like you to join me in congratulating Carrie Butler. I don't see her here today, unfortunately, so it doesn't look like we'll be able to hear from her, but I would like to congratulate her, and thank you for allowing us to recognize her today. Thank you. Next, I will present two recognitions from the spring semester that were canceled due to the pandemic. Concert Choir, nine students auditioned successfully into the Texas Two-Year College All-State Choir. These students performed at the Texas Music Educators Association Convention in San Antonio on February 12th through 15th with their guest clinician, Dr. Eugene Rogers, Director of Coral Activities at the University of Michigan. Special thanks goes to our Director of Coral Activities Assistant Professor, Dr. Greg Graff, who is here with us today. Two students of that group are current students this semester, Samuel Benavides and Anna Colchado, and they're in attendance as well. We acknowledge the seven students as well, Ariana Solis, Caitlin Lahoon, Belissa Perea, Eric Montez, Daryl McHuster, Richie Gondara, and John Durham. Please join me in congratulating our concert choir, and I'd like to ask if Dr. Graff would like to make a few brief comments.
Yes, thank you so much for taking time to recognize our very talented students. I'm always very proud of them. They worked so hard to make this an achievement for them, and I feel very blessed to work with them and to be here at Delmar College, so thank you.
Would Anna or Samuel like to say a couple words?
I just wanted to express my gratitude to the Board of Regents for allowing us to go and having this experience with a clinician and the whole package of everything, being able to go to TMEA. It just really helps us with getting the experience in our field so that we know what's to come whenever we graduate and do go on to professional careers.
Thank you, Anna. Samuel, did you want to say anything?
She kind of covered everything, but I just also want to express my gratitude. Thank y'all for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Samuel. Thank you so much, and we really congratulate you on your achievement, very much so.
Samuel, and Anna, and Mr. Graff, thank you so much for being here today, and Samuel and Anna for representing your fellow students with this remarkable achievement. We are very proud of you, and again, we're sad that we can't do this in person, and we will look forward to the opportunities to meet you both in person and to hear you sing. Thank you, and congratulations.
They are wonderful. If you've never heard the choir before, you have to hear it. It is just absolutely beautiful. I was blown away the first time I heard the choir under Dr. Graff. It was fantastic. Next, for recognition, Vocal Vikings. They've been extremely busy, but we did, you know, cancel them coming to the board meeting back in the March because of the pandemic, so they're being honored for two things, something current that they did virtually plus something they did last February. First, five students won debate competition at the Texas Intercollegiate Forensics Association State Tournament. The debates were held February 7th through 9th at Texas State University. There were 17 participating colleges and universities. They received many awards. Kendall Messer, he got the Top Community College After Dinner Speaking Award. Mary Gashewski, she was Top Community College Informative Speaking Award. Nadia Garcia, Kendall Messer, Top Community College Top Novice, and they got Third Place Duo Interpretation. Mary Gashewski also had Fifth Place Informative Speaking. Nadia Garcia, Kendall Messer, Fourth Place Duo Interpretation. Four of those students also participated in Speech on the Beach Event, a swing competition. And so Mary Gashewski was Fourth Place Informative Speaking. Nadia Garcia received many awards, First Place Duo Interpretation, Sixth Place Prose, Second Place Duo Interpretation on a Separate Day, Third Place Poetry, Seventh Place Prose. Kendall Messer, First Place Duo Interpretation on Saturday, Second Place Duo Interpretation on Sunday. Kim Porfirio, Fourth Place Dramatic Interpretation on Saturday, Fifth Place Dramatic Interpretation on Sunday. Justin Gonzalez, Kimberly Porfirio, and Felix Bolito also participated further. I want to express my sincere appreciation to the faculty, coaches, and students for all their hard work. Present today are Vocal Viking students. I saw Mary Gashewski, I think she's here today. Sarah Contreras, who is the Viking Coach, is here. And I did want to give a recognition to Beth McDonald, who's an adjunct in government, competed in debate at Pepperdine. She's been helping as well. And so I want to congratulate the Vocal Vikings on these achievements. Ms. Contreras, would you like to say a word, please?
I would love to, and I'm sorry, my video's not working. It worked this morning, but I wanted to thank Delmar College for their continued support for this event. Speaking and communication is a highly desirable skill, especially in our world today, and I am so proud of these students. Nadia Garcia is also in attendance. Girls, I don't know if y'all can get your camera to open, although mine will not, and I just want to thank you. In this time, there are so many schools competing in this whose programs are in jeopardy, and Delmar has always had a longstanding support of this event, and I cannot thank you enough.
Nadia, Mary, or Mary, would you like to say a word?
I would just like to also thank Delmar for supporting the Vocal Vikings team and supporting our travels pre-COVID, but also supporting our project and our speaking now during this difficult time and doing the online tournaments. And I just also want to thank Sarah for being an amazing coach, and also Beth McDonald for also being an amazing coach who has definitely helped the team grow.
I think Nadia's trying to say something. Nadia? She may be having a few technical difficulties. There she is. Well, you know, while you're working out some technical difficulties, I have more to say about the Vocal Vikings. This fall semester, and it involves Nadia and Mary as well, but they competed in their first virtual tournament. So what I talked about previously was, you know, in-person tournaments, but now it's virtual tournaments. And so this was hosted by Bowling Green State University in Ohio this October. The team had to overcome several new formats for the virtual competition. The tournament included 24 colleges and universities from across the country, and Nadia and Mary won sixth place in the Duo Interpretation, where the two competitors had to perform a piece from two different rooms and computers. Additionally, Nadia also won second place in Varsity Poetry. We are proud to again congratulate the students and our faculty coach for those awards, and also I wanted to give a nod to the IT person, Mark Heniosa, who helped during that Saturday morning to assist our students. Nadia, since you didn't get a chance to speak, did you work out your technical difficulties to say a few words?
So I couldn't get my camera to work, and I apologize for that, but I wanted to thank all the Delmar Board members. It is such an honor to be able to participate in doing speech. I have been doing it since high school, and I'm grateful to continue on doing something that I love.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that very much. Anyway, I'd like to give a big congratulations to our Vocal Vikings who have been extremely active, whether it's before COVID or after. They are still going strong, very strong.
Thank you, Dr. Halkum, and on behalf of the Board of Regents, we give our jazz hands wave or however we applause. So congratulations to our students, and thank you very much to the faculty and staff who support them in these achievements.
Madam Chair, I see that Carrie Butler joined us late. Do I have a minute to allow her to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Carrie Butler, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, ma'am, I sure would. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm not sure if you can hear me. Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Dr. Halkum.
We can hear you.
Thank you so much. I apologize for, I was having some technical difficulties getting logged in, but I do want to just say what an honor it is to be a part of Sigma Kappa Delta, which is our English Honor Society for our community colleges. And this year, Sigma Kappa Delta is celebrating its 25th national anniversary, and so we promote the love of language and literature in our students by hosting different creative writing events and open mics, and we participate in poetry and Poem in Your Pocket Days during the National Poetry Month in April, and it has just been such a joy to see our students get excited about English and language and literature. Our students aren't just English majors, so we have students from all over the campus who participate in Sigma Kappa Delta, and I appreciate the support and the opportunity to be a part of this organization, a part of this Honor Society. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Carrie, on behalf of the Board of Regents, congratulations, and thank you for your service to our students. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing us time today to recognize our faculty and students and their achievements.
Thank you very much, Dr. Halkum, and we always enjoy this, so please keep them coming.
Sure will.
The next item on our agenda is our regular student success report. There are many strategies and tactics that go into the fulfillment of our strategic plan as it relates to student retention and completion and engagement, and so we appreciate these now monthly updates on student success. Dr. Eskamia, do you have anything for introduction on this?
Just really briefly, today is the Marine Corps' birthday, and I know we're going to be discussing a bunch of, we're going to be talking about Veterans Day, which will be celebrated tomorrow. Lots of activities going on today and tomorrow, but especially tomorrow, more inclusively of all veterans that we recognize out there. We tied into the timing of Veterans Day, an opportunity to talk about our Veterans Upward Bound Program that is so successful here at the college and that we're so proud of. And so in honor of all of our veterans, past, present, and future, this report's for you. Dr. Silva? Dr. Silva?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents, and Dr. Eskamia. Let me tell you, it's a personal privilege today to present our Veterans Upward Bound Program as a student success highlight in honor of Veterans Day tomorrow. Our veteran population is a very special population to us, and we strive to be a veteran-friendly institution. Next slide, please. The mission of Veterans Upward Bound Program is to provide U.S. military veterans with supportive services that will ensure that they have the motivation and skills to enter and graduate the post-secondary institution of their choice. This program is not a Delmar College-specific. We help veterans with any institution they choose. To be eligible for the program, an individual must be a U.S. military veteran with at least 181 days of active-duty service and have a qualifying income level or be a first-generation college student. Next slide, please. Delmar College received a Veterans Upward Bound Grant in 2017 from the U.S. Department of Education Federal Trio Program. Delmar College is only one of two Texas community colleges with this program. The grant was for $1.3 million over five years, and this program employs one director, an advisor, a coordinator, a part-time advisor, and five part-time tutors and instructors, mentors. Next slide, please. The program offers post-secondary assistance like help with admissions paperwork, explanation of VA educational benefits, and competing financial aid application. It also offers support services like mental health awareness, individual mentoring, and as well as a $40 monthly stipend. Veterans also get assistance with career exploration and academic assistance in the form of free individualized tutoring, free TSI test preparation, and academic instruction. Next slide, please. Veterans Upward Bound served 125 students both in 2017 and 2018, and due to COVID, they served 101 students in 2019, but they're still going strong, and they have met every federal requirement. As you can see in this slide, most veterans come in for post-secondary assistance, thus applying for college. Next slide. Although support and assistance is provided for enrollment at any post-secondary institution, we are happy to report that 86% of the participants choose Delmar College to attend. Next slide. And on behalf of all of us, the day before Veterans Day, we'd like to thank all veterans who have served our country. We are forever grateful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Silva. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Silva? Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, and before I move on, the Board of Regents will add to that, thank you to our veterans in acknowledgement of Veterans Day tomorrow. Next item on our agenda is the College President's Report. Dr. Eskamia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll have a brief and focused report on a college-wide update and how we're proceeding into the latter half of our fall semester. So as we do proceed into the latter half of our fall semester, the college continues to operate cautiously and in adherence to guidelines from local, state, and federal government agencies. We are well in the flu season, so we are watching this in addition to COVID-19 developments. What will soon change is the number of our students coming to our campus face-to-face with face-to-face instruction, which currently accounts for about 40% to 45% of our fall semester enrollment. By the Thanksgiving holiday, these students will have completed their face-to-face requirements of their programs. After the Thanksgiving holiday, only about 5% of our enrolled students will need to come back to campus for classes. This is in accordance with Phase 2 of our Return to Campus Plan that was developed prior to the fall semester. So I want to make a point there, reemphasize that point. This is something we've been planning on, and we think we, and we had the choice of not doing it, but we still say that the choices that we made earlier on this semester are accurate, and working with the guidelines in accordance with the CDC and others, that we feel very strongly that we're making the right call. And we've also checked with our sister institutions throughout the state and country, both universities and colleges alike. The few hundred students, faculty, and staff coming to the college for the rest of the semester will be safely isolated across our campuses, and they will continue to follow health and safety protocols, including face masks and social distancing and other PPE. The goal is to reduce gathering to absolute minimums. These measures are consistent with what's happening, again, like I said, across the country, across the state, and with our fellow institutions. The Fall Commencement is the last piece of my very short report today, and I'll answer any questions. As a reminder, we will hold our Fall Commencement Ceremony virtually once again, just as we did for the spring and summer. The ceremony will be broadcast via the college's social media channels at 7:00 PM Friday, December 11th. So get ready. Everybody needs to make plan for that virtual ceremony, and we're going to give it our best for all our graduates and all our families, just as we do with face-to-face, and we look forward to everyone participating there as well. That concludes my update on campus operations, and then I have one more announcement.
Any questions on campus operations? Yes, Dr. Eskamia?
Thank you. And if there are any other subsequent questions after this, Regents, please, and/or anybody, please feel free to call me, call the college, and we'll be glad to update and clarify. So now it's my honor and privilege to announce an award that was bestowed upon Delmar College last week regarding our carpentry program and as it was generated from our Rebuild Texas Grant. And I'll start off by reading this quick, and then I'm going to hand it over to the parties that really made this happen. Texas First Lady Cecilia Abbott and the OneStar Foundation announced today, which was November 6th, the 2020 Governors Volunteer Awards, and it named Delmar College as the recipient of the 2020 Higher Education Community Impact Community College Award, one of nine categories given every year. Okay, this is a big deal, ladies and gentlemen. It just was bestowed upon us late last week, and we tried to push it out over the weekend, and so we kind of made it up over the past couple of days to fit it into the president's report because we wanted to share with you this most important award, coming from a program that, well, I'll spare you all the details. I'll leave the details for Ms. Lenora Keys and Dr. Leonard Ruvetta, and Mary McQueen also was very integral in making this grant work. But that being said, Lenora, would you take it away, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Dr. Eskamia. We're very honored to receive Governor Abbott's OneStar Foundation Volunteer Award in the category of Higher Education Community Impact. I keep wanting to reemphasize "community impact" for the Rebuild Texas Carpentry Skills Training Program. The OneStar Foundation recognized the devastation in Aransas, Refugio, San Patricio, and Nuasis Counties that was caused by Hurricane Harvey and the lack of skilled workforce in the rebuilding of the Coastal Bend. This program was supported by a grant for over $1.2 million that came to the college through the Delmar College Foundation and under the leadership of Mary McQueen. Through the combined efforts of the foundation and the Continuing Education Department, the Service Learning Program came into fruition. We are very grateful for the leadership and consistent support of Mary McQueen and Dr. Leonard Rivera, Dean of Continuing Education. I also want to recognize the dedication, and I have to say, pure determination of Arnold Mendez, who served as Program Manager, and Naomi Fries, the Career Navigator. Their day-to-day efforts in working the local communities made this a great success. Our contact with the OneStar Foundation was Christina Cornejo, and we are greatly appreciative of her continued support throughout the entire grant. And now, Dr. Leonard Rivera will share some specific insights into the Rebuild Texas Program. Thank you, Leonard.
Thanks, Ms. Keys. Appreciate that. Again, I appreciate the support garnered from Dr. Eskamia and the entire executive team. In particular, though, I would like to recognize Dr. Natalie Verreal for working hard in Austin by not only identifying the Rebuild Texas Grant opportunity but advocating for it, which is part of Rule 5, our strategic plan. So thank you so much, Dr. Verreal, for advocating for this grant and really securing this grant and having Mary McQueen, our foundation, really oversee it and manage the funds once we received it. So thank you all so much. It's really a team effort. There's a saying in the carpentry realm that when things fall apart, it takes a carpenter to put it back together, and this couldn't be more true after Hurricane Harvey struck the Coastal Bend. The Rebuild Texas Program's mission was to help rebuild the Coastal Bend by teaching others the art of carpentry so that we can again, or could be again, or will be again in the Coastal Bend area. During the Rebuild Texas Program timeline, I witnessed individuals aged from 18 to their 70s learn the art of carpentry. I witnessed individuals that were unemployed learn the carpentry trade and transition not into just a job but a career. I witnessed a young, freshly-minted carpenter get a job in the carpentry field and buy his first vehicle. And how awesome is that, to witness that? I witnessed a young lady that waited tables, that she waited tables, was a waitress for a local restaurant in her area. She went through the Rebuild Texas Carpenter Program, got a job, and is now superintendent for a construction firm and now making over $100,000 a year. That's a total transformation for this young lady, and this program was about transformations when it all comes down to it. Over 207, to be exact, that's the number of students that we have touched to this point. The Rebuild Texas Program is steeped in service learning, as Ms. Keys mentioned, and its innovating ness in how it was ruled out. We set up in seven locations, including Centon, Ingleside, Refugio, Rockport, Flower Bluff, and... and Bayside, as well as the Delmar West Campus. Again, as I said earlier, over 270 students were served through this $1.2 million grant provided by the One Star Foundation. I'm very proud of my continuing education team comprised of instructors, our business restoration team, our support staff, our coordinators, program managers, everyone in between that made this a, from a possibility to a reality, and helping support our carpentry students. And not only that, but become gainfully employed. So with that, I'd like to end there and really want to thank the entire board, the executive team, Dr. Eskamia, Ms. Keys, thank you for entrusting us, entrusting me, to serve the college as well as our community at large, along with my team. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Two more points that I'd just like to make. Regents and everyone listening in, this grant was one of the hardest grants to get off the ground throughout the state. There was just, we were one of the few, and I think probably, I think the first to really get this grant going. It was the way it was initiated and the way things, the conditions, the way the conditions changed when it was initiated, it made it most difficult. The tenacity, the tenacity of the Delmar Group and the leadership that it took for them to come together and get this thing off the ground productive and then straight to the top of the charts was amazing. So again, hats off to everybody. Congratulations to everybody. And then one final note, this grant is wrapping up, but like with all good grants, institutionalizing the grant is the key and the importance for continuing. Okay? And so I want you all to know that the carpentry program is, although the Texas, excuse me, the Rebuild Texas Grant dollars are going away, as grants do, we've institutionalized this program, both through continuing, especially on the continuing education side, and it's going to continue, and it's going to be a part of what we're doing and part of what we, a part of doing business. As you'll recall, we also have, and you all, as you all recall, about a year or two ago, I can't remember, I apologize, but we, you all approved a carpentry program on the credit side as well. So we have that version as well. This grant did what it did. It took off, ramped us up, got us started out there, won a Governor's Award outstanding. We've institutionalized it on the continuing education side to be quick and rapidly responsive to the community, and we also have the credit program as well. Picture-perfect execution of a program that was developed out of a very, very difficult situation, which was Hurricane Harvey. Hats off to everybody. Congratulations to the entire college on this one.
Congratulations, Dr. Eskamia, Ms. Keys, Dr. Rivera, definitely all of our instructors in these programs for doing such an outstanding job.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you. All right, let's move into some more good news under our staff reports, and let's talk about our SACs COC reaffirmation and QEP update. Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the honor of teeing up Dr. Christina Wilson. I'm going to give, I'm not going to steal any thunder, other than to say, this is some fantastic news about our reaffirmation of accreditation visit. It was a virtual onsite visit, if you will, pardon the contradiction there of terms. Dr. Christina, tell us what happened.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Regents, Madam Chair, and Dr. Eskamia. I'm very pleased to be able to provide you with an update on our SAC COC reaffirmation processes. Next slide, please. The Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, otherwise known as SAC COC, is a regional body for accreditation for degree-granting higher education institutions in the southern United States. The purpose of accrediting bodies such as SAC COC is to ensure educational quality and institutional effectiveness. Delmar College is accredited by SAC COC, and this positive status allows our coursework and degrees to transfer to other accredited institutions. It also allows our students to receive federal financial aid. In order to maintain this positive accreditation status, Delmar College must undergo a reaffirmation process every 10 years. The process consists of multiple steps over the course of two years. Preparation for the reaffirmation process begins well before the official start of the two-year process. Next slide, please. Delmar College is in the reaffirmation class of 2021. However, the process began much earlier. This slide lists the steps that we have already completed, which we'll be talking about in detail today. The compliance certification was completed and submitted in March of this year. A committee of peer evaluators, known as the Off-Site Committee, reviewed our compliance certification materials and provided us with feedback in May. Subsequently, we submitted the Quality Enhancement Plan, otherwise known as the QEP, and focused report in September. And most recently, we hosted the On-Site Committee Visit almost two weeks ago. We will be discussing each of these completed steps in detail, as well as the final steps in the reaffirmation process. Next slide, please. Preparing for the compliance certification is a part of the process that is the most extensive and time-consuming. Beginning in June 2018, the college convened the SAC COC Steering Committee, made up of leaders and representatives from all over the college. The committee prepared responses to 74 standards, which required detailed narrative descriptions and numerous evidence items for each standard. All told, the compliance certification contained nearly 10,000 individual items, almost 600 pages of narrative, and 6.5 gigabytes of data. All of this was submitted in March. Next slide, please. In May 2020, we received the response report from the Off-Site Committee. Out of the 74 standards, only one standard required additional information. Already, we were off to a good start. On average, institutions must respond to 15 areas of noncompliance at this stage. Our SAC COC Vice President, Dr. Michael Hofer, has told us that there are no other institutions that he is aware of that have required follow-up with just one standard. The standard in which we submitted additional information is 6.2A, Faculty Qualifications. This is a standard that is most frequently cited as needing additional information and/or remediation. In our case, out of the hundreds of files submitted as part of the standard, there were a few that were out of date or in which the hyperlinks were inactive. We submitted the updated files and corrected links as part of the focused report in September 2020. Next slide, please. In September, we also submitted our Quality Enhancement Plan, otherwise referred to as the QEP. This is a key component of the reaffirmation process, which results in a standalone 100-page document. The QEP is a detailed plan of action designed to improve student success. It is important that the plan's area of focus be aligned with our college's comprehensive planning and evaluation processes. In other words, our strategic plan. It is also important that the area of focus have institutional buy-in, meaning that the vast majority of faculty, staff, and students believe that the plan will positively impact student success. The process of selecting our QEP topic began in early 2019, under the leadership of Dr. Dale Anderson, Associate Professor of Speech, who at the time served as the Faculty Coordinator of the QEP. After conducting extensive surveys and focus groups with faculty, staff, and students, the topic that was selected was academic advising. Next slide, please. GPS, Goals Plus Planning Equals Success, is the title of the college's QEP centered around academic advising. The plan was developed under the leadership of Pristine Goddard-Moller, Assistant Professor of Political Science, who assumed the role of Faculty Coordinator of the QEP after Dr. Dale Anderson accepted the role of Chair of the Communication Languages and Reading Departments. The plan consists of five overarching goals designed to strengthen advice and supports from the beginning of students' college careers until they earn a credential, transfer, or enter the workforce. The QEP is designed to support the attainment of the college's strategic plan goals and key performance indicators. I will pause briefly here for any questions. Okay, hearing none. Next slide, please. The onsite visit is a key component of the reaffirmation process. During this multi-day event, the committee is charged with addressing several areas of focus. First, they must review the QEP in depth to ensure that it meets all requirements. Once it is established that the requirements are met, the committee is free to provide advice on how the QEP can be strengthened. The committee must also conduct interviews with faculty and staff to ensure the college complies with federally mandated standards. Additionally, in cases where a college has many new off-campus instructional sites, they must conduct site visits. Finally, the committee must review information related to the focused report. Our onsite committee visit occurred just two weeks ago during the week of October the 26th. Due to precautions, due to COVID-19, our onsite visit was conducted in a completely virtual online environment. The original plans to host the committee in person were abandoned when we learned in July that we would be hosting one of the first fully virtual site visits ever to be conducted. Next slide, please. What you see on your screen now is the homepage for our virtual onsite visit website. Our SAC COC reviewers and our Delmar faculty and staff, meeting participants, accessed their virtual interviews using the navigation menu for each day of the visit. All interviews and meetings were facilitated using the Microsoft Teams video conferencing software. The website also included links to our virtual campus tour videos. Numerous meetings and interviews took place during the first three days of the visit. Day one focused on virtual visits and interviews with faculty and staff at our off-site, off-campus instructional sites. Day two included the official kickoff presentation, the QEP presentation, and interviews with faculty and staff on federal requirements. Day three focused on the QEP and included interviews with our Board of Regents, officers, and our students. In addition to their meetings and interviews with us, the committee convened on their own throughout the visit to determine collectively whether our college is in compliance with SAC COC standards. All interviews and meetings led up to the grand finale of the visit, the exit conference, scheduled on the morning of day four. During the exit conference, the committee shared their findings and determinations of whether the college is in compliance. Next slide, please. As the visual shows, we received very good news, fireworks everywhere. I am very pleased to share that during the exit conference, the committee announced that Delmar College is in compliance with all SAC COC and federal standards. In other words, the college has zero recommendations and zero areas of noncompliance. After two years of preparation, we received the best possible outcome. This is a tremendous accomplishment for Delmar College. I would like to take the time to thank our Board of Regents and our President, Dr. Mark Eskamia, for their support and their leadership. Dr. Eskamia consistently emphasized the importance of viewing this process as an opportunity to improve. There are no perfect colleges out there, and being able to be honest about both our strengths and the areas in which we need to improve is a testament to our college's integrity and our commitment to serving our students. I would like to thank the SAC COC Steering Committee and writers, who participated in numerous meetings, responded to countless requests for information, engaged so much of their time and energy to representing the college so well. Also, to our IT team under the leadership of August Alfonso and Jessica Montalvo Cummings. Our fully virtual visit went off without a hitch. Our SAC COC guests were very complimentary of our technology and the support that we provided to them. Finally, I'd like to give special thanks to Dr. Sydney Zombie and Dr. Lucy James, who were my partners in leading this process. I'll pause here for comments and questions.
I do want to congratulate Dr. Eskamia and your entire team for this amazing result. I will leave it to Dr. Sherwood and others who have had experience with this along the way to know that not every, every college has worked this hard to get this result, and there are a lot of colleges that are working very hard and still don't get this result. But I think it, it just, it has to be emphasized enough that this seal of approval from the accreditation entity without which we can't operate is just incredible. And so, on behalf of the Board of Regents and behalf of our community and our students, thank you all for the great work that you did.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Hutchinson.
I just want to add the congratulations and also acknowledge that there may not be any perfect colleges, but we certainly have put that bar very, very high and just let everybody else try to do this. Congratulations.
Dr. Sherwood.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this really is an amazing result because it's, there's so much detail, and it's a testament to people who put the report together, but beyond that, it's a testament to the college as a whole that, over this 10-year period, that we have been fulfilling all we should be fulfilling. So it's really, really, really wonderful. I totally applaud everyone.
Other comments from Regents?
Yes, I would just like to add my congratulations, and when I joined the board last year, and you all started talking about this, and, Dr. Wilson, you were taking us through the steps, I just thought, oh my goodness, this is such a huge undertaking, and frankly, I'm a little surprised that we've ended this good, simply because it seemed like the system was such that nobody ended this well. So I shouldn't be surprised, though, given our fantastic staff and all of the hard, deliberate work that you did to make this successful. I'm just really appreciative of all of you and all the hard work that went into this.
In talking about this with various community members, for those of us who were on the campaign trail for the past couple of months, my husband kept on telling me, don't talk about accreditation, nobody understands it, because I was talking about all the data and all the points and, you know, and he was like, that's just too much information. But I will tell you that sharing it with bankers who go through all of the examiners, the bank examiners, sharing it with healthcare folks who have to go through HIPAA reviews and all of their reviews, I'm certain, certainly Mr. Bennett could talk about audits and what happens in financial audits. And so, when you actually put it in those terms, that this is, this is that important for us in terms of operations, and to come back with one area where we had some documentation errors, and then end the result at this point in the stage with zero recommendations, there literally have been a lot of jaws dropped, oh my gosh, that's amazing. So when I put it in those terms for folks who I've interacted with, they get it. So it is, it is truly incredible. Dr. Sherwood, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one more thing, that of all the regional accrediting agencies, SAC COC is known as the toughest. So that's a, another little aspect of this accomplishment.
Good to know, good to know. Dr. Eskamia?
Yep. To your point, Dr. Sherwood, I've been at another college under the North Central Association, and I'll tell you, the commission on colleges here in the Southern Association is just a different group of individuals. I'm privileged and honored to know many, many of them. They've been colleagues for a very long time, good friends. Chairwoman and CEO, excuse me, the CEO, Dr. Bell Whelan, longtime friend, fellow South Texan, has just done a remarkable job by positioning Texan, has just done a remarkable job by positioning SACC CSC as that entity that has what we call the highest standards. Just a great organization. The current Chair of the Board is Dr. Brenda Helyer, Chancellor of San Jacinto College. But no Texans, no fellow Texans reviewed anything of ours, and that's the way it works. We're reviewed by our peers, but none from the same state, and so it's a very, very high bar, to use your term, Regent Hutchinson, that was set. And I just want to add two things, you know, when we did this back in 2011, went through this in 2010, 11, it took us all three bites at the apple, and we came out with zero recommendations at the end, but it would be, it would be a waiting game of nine more months before that result came. Right now, this is done, this early in the process, really it was done before we got here, before they got here virtually, albeit. And that, I'll use that as a lead-in to just thank the team. Our leadership team with Dr. Christina, Dr. Zombie, and Dr. James, Dr. Gottmiller, and all the team out there, the entire college, this is, those fireworks are for you all. This is for the college. This is what it's all about. It was my job to make sure we stayed on track, and we did, and we did it with the number one criterion of the whole thing, and that's integrity. And that's what we do, that's what we've done, and that's what we'll always continue to do. That's the number one criterion. Show that SACC asks that every institution show that throughout each of its processes, all of its processes, it's done with integrity. That's what makes me most proud about all of this from that specific point of view. But just, this is a win for the college, just as you said, Madam Chair, this is a win for our students, our employees, the greater community that which we serve. The bar has been set really high, and congratulations to everybody, and thanks to all the team with the blood, sweat, and tears and those incalculable hours, the time and effort put into this will never be calculated, only felt in our bones and in our hearts and our sleep-deprived bodies. But anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Escamilla. And so, it's not official yet, and so, Dr. Wilson, your next slide tells us what the next steps are.
Yes, ma'am, next slide please. It is not over yet, there are a few additional last steps. We now have the opportunity to respond to the feedback that we received on our QEP. We received some very helpful feedback on how to strengthen our plan, particularly in the area of college-wide communication. We will be incorporating this feedback that we received into our QEP and resubmitting by April 2021. We will also be hosting a brief in-person visit with our SACC COC Vice President and a member of the Onsite Committee. An abbreviated face-to-face check-in visit is still required as part of this process, and a date for when this visit will take place has not yet been set. SACC COC is not yet allowing face-to-face travel, so we will stay posted. Finally, the SACC COC Board of Trustees will review the reports from the Off-Site and Onsite Committee reports, and will make a final decision regarding our reaffirmation status in June 2021. Our status will be officially announced at the annual meeting in December 2021. At this point in the process, the reaffirmation will be officially complete, and the college will start planning for the next one. Next slide please. I would like to thank our Regents, our Chair, Dr. Escamilla, for your support throughout this whole process. This was truly a team effort, and there were no areas or aspects of the college that remained untouched during this two-year process. I'm very proud of our college, very proud of this work, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about it today. Are there any questions?
Thank you again, and thank you for this very comprehensive report, Dr. Wilson. The next item under Staff Reports is one that is kind of an annual update for us now related to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board's 60 by 30 Strategic Plan. So we do a regular update regarding our pieces of that, and I'll let Dr. Escamilla tee this up.
Madam Chair, you said it best, and this is updating us on our blueprint for higher education for the state of Texas. I will add that something that's probably, I don't think is included in here, but we may add it to our conversation, and that is that this plan is being reviewed by the leadership of the various Commissioners of the state of Texas, that being the Higher Education Commissioner, the Workforce Commissioner, higher edu-, excuse me, TEA Commissioner and others, to see how it may be modified, like any good plan should be at least considered.
When you say this plan, you mean the statewide plan, not Delmar College?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, the statewide plan of 60 by 30 from a statewide basis may be modified. So just stay tuned for that, we're waiting to hear what that's going to look like. But for now, given the template that we have and that we're working toward, Dr. Christina Wilson will talk to, will share with us how the college is meeting its goals regarding the 60 by 30 plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello again, Regents. I will now provide an update on 60 by 30. Next slide please. 60 by 30 TX is a strategic plan for higher education in the state of Texas. It was established five years ago under the leadership of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Commissioner, Dr. Raymond Badevis. The title of the plan 60 by 30 refers to the plan's overarching goal. By 2030, at least 60% of Texans ages 25 to 34 will have a certificate or degree. The plan includes four overall goals, which we will be discussing in detail today with state-level targets. Important to note that the goals and targets apply to all public higher education institutions in Texas, including universities, community colleges, and technical colleges. The plan has also established targets based on regions within the state. The map on this slide illustrates these regions as defined by the Coordinating Board. Delmar College is included in the South Texas region, which spans from San Antonio to the Rio Grande Valley. Next slide please. Slide please. Slide please. Since its adoption, Delmar College has acted to meet the plan's goals and targets. Delmar College's strategic plan and key performance indicators are aligned with the state's 60 by 30 goals and targets. Additionally, the college has been involved in regional efforts to implement the plan. In February 2019, the college hosted a group of representatives from the Middle-South Texas region, including colleagues from Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, Laredo College, and Victoria College. The participants engaged in discussions about how best to collaborate as a region to meet the goals and targets of the 60 by 30 strategic plan. This collaboration continued in the fall of 2019, when Texas A&amp;M Kingsville hosted a follow-up meeting on their campus. Next slide please. In September 2019, Dr. Harrison Keller took office as the new Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Commissioner. Since taking the helm, he has begun to evaluate the 60 by 30 plan with fresh eyes, as Dr. Escamilla mentioned. More on this a little later. The COVID-19 pandemic has also impacted the statewide implementation of 60 by 30. The Coordinating Board recently shifted its focus to address new and urgent priorities, such as developing health and safety protocols for institutions and providing guidance on shifting instructional delivery to an online format. Some state activities have also been delayed. Despite these changes, we do have data to review today, which has been updated since the last time that I presented on this topic in June 2019. Next slide please. As I mentioned, the 60 by 30 strategic plan has four overarching goals. Each of these goals has statewide targets. In subsequent slides, we will review the targets and most up-to-date data for each of these four goals. Statewide targets will be designated with the state of Texas icon. Some goals also have regional targets. As a reminder, Delmar College is included as part of the South Texas region. Regional targets will be designated in subsequent slides with the South Texas icon. There are also three goals with institution-specific targets. These targets will be designated with the Delmar College logo. Next slide please. Goal one of the 60 by 30 plan is the educated population goal. By 2030, at least 60% of Texans ages 25 to 34 will have a certificate or degree. On this slide, you will see the actual data points in 2015 and the statewide targets for 2020, 2025, and 2030. In 2015, 41% of Texans ages 25 through 34 had a certificate or degree. These results are based on the American Community Survey, which is published annually by the U.S. Census Bureau. In 2018, this data point increased to 43.6%. We will need to see a statewide increase of just over four percentage points in order to meet the 48% target by 2020. Any questions? Okay, next slide please. Here we will continue to review Goal One, but now from a regional perspective. By 2030, at least 47% of South Texans ages 25 to 34 will have a certificate or degree. Here you will see the actual data point in 2015 and the regional targets for 2020, 2025, and 2030. In 2015, just over 33% of South Texans ages 25 to 34 had a certificate or degree. Again, these results are based on the American Community Survey, which is published annually by the U.S. Census Bureau. In 2018, this data point increased to 36.5%. We have almost met our regional target of 37% by 2020. Any questions? Okay, next slide please. Now we will look at Goal Two completion. By 2030, at least 550,000 certificates and degrees will be awarded in Texas. In 2015, over 311,000 certificates and degrees were awarded statewide. In 2019, over 347,000 were awarded. This leaves a gap of nearly 29,000 additional certificates and degrees that will need to be awarded in the subsequent year in order to meet the 2020 target. Please note that these numbers do not include continuing education certifications, which is a limitation of how the plan was initially designed. Any questions? Okay, next slide please. Now we will look at Goal Two completion from a regional lens. By 2030, at least 93,113 certificates and degrees will be awarded in South Texas. In 2015, over 49,000 certificates and degrees were awarded in the region. In 2019, over 53,000 were awarded. This leaves a gap of over 10,000 additional certificates and degrees that will need to be awarded in this subsequent year in order to meet the 2020 target. Again, please note that these numbers do not include continuing education certifications. Any questions? Okay, next slide. Now we will look at Goal Two from an institutional lens. By 2030, at least 2,873 certificates and degrees will be awarded at Delmar College. In 2015, over 1,400 certificates and degrees were awarded at the college. In 2019, over 1,800 were awarded. We need to award a little over 100 additional certificates and degrees in the subsequent year in order to meet the 2020 targets. Any questions? Okay, next slide. Moving on to Goal Three, marketable skills. By 2030, at least 80% of students who earn a certificate or degree will be working and/or enrolled in higher education within one year of completion. Since 2015, Delmar College has exceeded this target. Most recently, in 2018, nearly 90% of our graduates were found to be working or enrolled within one year of completion. Any questions? Okay, next slide please. Goal Four is student debt. By 2030, no more than half of all students who earn an undergraduate degree or certificate will have debt. Delmar College has consistently exceeded this target. In 2019, 68.3% of our students graduated without debt. This concludes the review of 60 by 30 goals and related data. Any questions? Okay, next slide. As Dr. Escamilla mentioned, there's been a very recent new development in the administration of the state's strategic plan. Just a few weeks ago, during the Coordinating Board's quarterly meeting, Dr. Harrison Keller announced that there is a need to refresh the state's 60 by 30 plan. Dr. Keller, the new Commissioner, plans to convene a committee to refine and strengthen the current plan and to present proposed changes to the plan by the middle of 2021. Next slide please. Dr. Keller describes several challenges with the current plan, which is why a refresh is needed. The current plan focuses on the younger working population and doesn't include a broad range of Texans that are seeking to upskill and re-skill for better employment opportunities. The current plan also promotes generic completion goals without differentiating goals for degrees, certificates, and certifications. The current plan also does not include continuing education awards. Finally, the plan does not address supports needed for students that have been most impacted by the pandemic, especially women, Hispanics, and African-Americans. Overall, the goal with the state's strategic plan refresh is to refine and add to existing measures, and the result will be a more focused statewide strategic plan. I'll pause here for questions.
I'm curious about the discussion around continuing education awards. Has that been explicit in the new Commissioner's concerns and desire for this refresh, or are we implying that?
No, that has been explicit in the conversation, and frankly, it's come from us. It's come from Texas Association of Community College, and I was present at that meeting. And we've had recurring re-skilling meetings going on. I'm on one of the committees, I don't know if I'll be ultimately on the committee that has that conversation, but no, it's understood very clearly by our Commissioners, both the Workforce Commissioner, Mr. Brian Daniels, as well as Dr. Harrison Keller from the Higher Education Commissioner, uh, Commissioner, excuse me, Higher Education Coordinating Board.
Thank you. So the potential out of that would be maybe not a change in the goals, but change in the definition of what's counted towards those goals in that specific area?
Yes, it's, the way it's being described is that there's lots of points being left on the table that we are just not counting and acknowledging. The big philosophical shift that I love, that I really am appreciating is that they are valuing all learners. Sounds a lot like our narrative back at home and here at Delmar College, and so, things are changing.
Yes, Mr. Garza, you have your mic open?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The question I've got is, is the last one, that it doesn't include the impact of COVID-19, and it talks about strengthening some of the goals. It seems to me like the, some of the areas, or some of the goals in there, I think we were going to be challenged in trying to reach because of the impact of COVID-19. And I think that until we're well through it, we're not going to know, I'm going to say how far behind we've fallen in those goals. But I also think that some of the information we got earlier related to distance learning, the distance learning, is going to provide us an opportunities to be able to reach some of those goals, maybe far exceed some of these goals, because previously we didn't have the experience of, or the need to do as much as we're doing now related to distance learning. Is that... Is that, does that make sense?
Yes, it does, Regent Garza. I hear what you're saying. I've not been in the conversations where they, where they explicitly describe that. I think it's implied with the entire curriculum, and I, I'll take that back to make, and verify where they're actually, what they're actually saying with regard to how distance ed can facilitate this instruction to mitigate the impact of COVID-19s and other things. I think that goes back to our other conversation that Dean Gregg presented, and you know, the permanency, the, 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 the long-lasting impacts and the permanent impacts that COVID-19 has brought upon us with forcing us to expand that online edu, or distance education is, is implied in everything, but I'll see what I can find. I hear what you're saying, though.
Okay.
I'll get back with you on that one.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Dr. Wilson.
I have one, Carol.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry, I was a little bit late on the draw there. Although I do have issues with this plan and the metrics they chose and everything, I do think one of the things we can't overlook in the data that was presented is that South Texas still continues to be very behind the state in our educational attainment, and that that is something that we, we, and I know that's what we're doing, but I just want to point that out, that that really has got to be our continuing quest, is to bring South Texas up to the, at least the level of the state, which is not as high as other states in educational attainment.
If I may, if I may. Dr. Mary, you're exactly right, and here's why the continuing education credentials are so important. Because as we look at people's educational careers and just their lives, it's, it's an evolutionary process of where they start and where they end up, or where, or the journey. You know, many times they start off with the, the quickest turnaround on a credential, and that's the foothold that they need. I, I am literally getting texts, getting texts from a student out in community right now, his longtime dear friend, who started out that way, who has credentials and doesn't even have a GED yet, and we're working towards that end. And, and, but, but that, those credentials are helping him get other interviews and other jobs, and it's leading to other coursework on the credit side to complete his, his associate degree. I mean, it's so ironic that they're literally buzzing me all day today for this one person. So what I want to say is, they're building blocks, and that's the way we have to look at it. Either you use them as footstep stones, stepping stones, or if you cap off, they could be capstones, capping off a master's degree, an MBA, those kinds of things. So there's, these are pieces of the puzzle, and we need to not, we need to remember that within a student's lifetime, that their worlds will evolve just like all of ours has, have. Excuse me, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you all. And again, thank you for those, those great reports, Dr. Eskamia and Dr. Wilson.
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to our pending business list, you'll see that upcoming in December, we have our strategic enrollment and marketing plan workshop, as well as a continuation of our board policy review. And then during the regular meeting, we'll hear our report on the Cleary data, interim status on grant management from our internal auditors, a foundation update, review of contracts, and begin discussion of our tuition policy for the next fiscal year. We do not have a January meeting planned, and then we will continue and hopefully finalize for this piece of it, our policy review in February, along with a spring enrollment update, quarterly financial and investment reports, et cetera. So you will see what we have coming before us. If you have any questions about any of those items, let me know or let Dr. Eskamia know. Any comments or questions referring our pending business list? Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda, we do have, let's see, three items under our consent agenda. Approval of minutes in September, two sets for September, and one, the workshop in October, and acceptance of our investments and financials for October and September. Are there any items that need to be pulled for separate consideration off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Moved. Okay.
Motion by Ms. Everett, second by Dr. Sherwood, I think is what I heard. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, raise your hand. That motion passes. Moving on to our regular agenda, we are going to have a discussion and possible action related to adoption of state and federal legislative agendas. As a FYI, both Dr. Eskamia and myself serve as officers of the state association and subsequently serve on the legislative committees of both of those associations, but we're going to turn this presentation over to Natalie. Dr. Villarreal.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you. Yes, Dr. Eskamia, Madam Chair, and board members. Today's legislative update will focus on information from the last two months since your last update in August. Now that we are past the general election, I'd like to discuss the newly adopted state agenda for community colleges with an opportunity for you to discuss and formally adopt at the recommendation of staff. I'd also like to update our board members and our new board members of the 2020 National Community College Legislative Priorities. Because we are at the end of year 2020, I think maybe it would be a better idea to wait and see what shifts happen at the national level with the legislative agenda for you to adopt. Our advocacy work at Delmar College fits within goal five of our strategic plan under workforce development, community partnership, and advocacy. Next slide, please. As we head into the 87th legislative session, with the Republican Party still the majority, bills are currently being filed and discussions for Speaker of the House are ramping up. As a reminder, the legislature kicks off this 2021 on January 12th. It's going for 140 days until signing die on May 31st. Two of the main priorities coming up for this session, number one, passing the budget, and two, redistricting. As of this week, we know that due to COVID-19, large gatherings in the Capitol will be prohibited. So for example, no city days, no community college days. And they are also considered, considering having scheduled meetings for anyone wishing to meet with the legislature. So I will continue to keep you posted on those procedures for the upcoming session, and also will let you know how we, as a college, plan to continue advocating in the middle of a pandemic. Next slide. So for our newest board members, today's update is brief. However, I do look forward to discussing with you in depth the role that Delmar College has, including Dr. Eskamia and team's role, and that you, as a board member, have advocating at the state and national level for our community college students, faculty, and staff. So today I'd like to present the joint official legislative agenda brought forth by the following groups. Number one, the Community College Association of Texas Trustees, as you know it is CAT, which this board is a part of, and as Chairwoman Scott mentioned, she currently serves as the chair. And then there's the Texas Association of Community Colleges. This is where our 50 community college presidents and chancellors come together as an organization. Dr. Eskamia currently serves as secretary and treasurer for the executive committee, is on the legislative committee, and sits on several other committees. The third group is the Texas Community College Teachers Association, or TCCTA. These three groups have been collaborating with the input from the Higher Education Coordinating Board to present a unified legislative agenda that ensures that these priorities that I'm about to present to you meet the needs of all 50 community college systems in the state. They began working on this agenda in October of 2019. However, due to the pandemic, the three groups had to quickly shift focus to advocate for the current needs of the 50 systems. In fact, just last week, President of CAT, Jacob Friday, presented the legislative appropriations request, the LAR. Those recommendations were represented, were recommended to the Legislative Budget Board, the LBB. And as we continue, I'll let you know, we just received an email from CAT. If you're seeing emails from Dr. Manuel Gonzalez or Manny, he is the president of CAT, and he just sent you some information on several workshops that are going to be conducted at the state level, that you'll have the opportunity to take part in, and we'll make sure that if you didn't see that email, that we'll remind you and send that to you, but that just came out a little while ago. Next slide, please. So getting into the state legislative priorities. After COVID, the priorities shifted to meet the needs of current issues due to the pandemic. Number one, the formula funding, the redistribution of how the colleges can earn financial compensation for the next biennium. The goal was to respectfully ask for continued support of community colleges, understanding the state's current fiscal conditions. So priority number one are formula funding. The total request, as you can see on this chart, is the same as the previous biennium, but there is a change in where the money is appropriated. So for example, if you take a look at core operations, we are asking for an increase from 68 million to 100 million. Why the shift in that? This ensures that the smaller and the medium colleges in the state are taken care of, since most of their budget is really dependent on the state funding. If you look at the student success points column, you'll see that about 12.5% of the state funding comes from this instruction. Now, after the last legislative session, it was recommended that the success point system be updated. They were specifically wanting us to look at transfer students and critical fields. This recommendation was also acknowledged by the coordinating board's Formula Advisory Committee. And lastly, the group is asking for appropriations towards a new workforce initiative, which I'll discuss later on after we discuss success points. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, this page solely focuses on the performance-based funding, or another way of saying that is the student success points. The funding asked is 282.8 million in the success point funding bucket. So just a quick recap on what success point is. This model was developed to measure the performance of institutions in a way that promotes our efforts to increase the rate of student progression and achievement. Success points are measurable attainments correlated with the completion of a milestone. So for example, if a student reaches 15 semester credit hours, if they reach 30 semester credit hours, that's another point. If they're awarded a degree or a certificate in a critical field, a field that's deemed necessary by the state. These are all taken into consideration, and for every success point, the colleges reimburse a rate for that student. Looking back at the Texas Legislature, this occurred in 2013, when they approved the use of success points for determining a percentage of the state funding that is allocated to community colleges. Next slide, please. Priority, priority number two, this shifts into the workforce and economic recovery policy. Now, you're going to hear the terms reskilling, upskilling, from our legislators and state officials at the coordinating board and in TAC. In fact, you just heard in the 60 by 30 presentation from Dr. Wilson and Dr. Eskamia about upskilling, right? So those are our citizens out in the community that have lost their jobs to the, due to the pandemic. Some of them are already credentialed, they already have degrees, but they are up, reskilling to something that does suit the needs of the economy and the workforce after the pandemic. Upskilling, again, those individuals who need those credentials to get back into the workforce. Dr. Eskamia is currently on the state committee for this next initiative. It's called TRU, and is also participating in national meetings. This is about prioritizing the creation of sustainable pipelines to fill those regional workforce needs. So I want to pause for a second. Dr. Eskamia, since you've been highly involved in the TRU initiative, would you like to talk about that?
So the workforce and the reskilling conversation has really derived as a result of COVID, and as such, the federal dollar, well, and, and the federal dollars that have been used to stimulate the economy and support the economy, and, and those dollars do permeate into the educational ranks, as you all heard through the CARES Act and those sorts of things. Well, there's pots of dollars that also go directly to the governor's office, and from those resources, with those resources, we've been working with the state leadership to determine if there are any opportunities for the grouping of, of, or association of community colleges to come together and put forth some workforce initiatives to help restart the economy and, and regain its positioning from, from, from a year ago or so. And so as such, there are several committees out there. As an officer, rest assured that I'm tied into all of those, and, and they, they, they look to us. They, they frequently call upon me and therefore Delmar College because of all the things going on here with workforce development. But the continuing education, we've talked about earlier, the things that we're doing with continuing education, is changing the narrative at the state level. Where's that coming from? That's coming from us, and I'm saying us at Delmar College, because of the things we're doing together here to increase that. This is another example of that, and why they bring, they always, they routinely ask me to be a part of the workforce conversations. So there's just a couple of updates. There's still a lot of work to be done. I continue to meet both statewide, with statewide, having statewide conversations. I'm also on a national group that's, that's really about best practices at other states and what they're facing as well. So that's my quick update with what's going on there. We're probably almost to midstream with regard to where, you know, what, what ultimately needs to come out of this, these, these policy development groups. That's going to be largely dependent upon how the legislative session goes. Thanks, Dr. Villarreal.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia. And so what the recommendation is, is a total of $50 million. That would mean that $1 million were to go to each community college system in the state for the TRU initiative, and that would be for creating sustainable pipelines to fill regional workforce needs, expanding the micro credentials and short-term certificates, and as we mentioned before, identifying those high-demand, short-term credentials that are also to be recognized now in the states, a higher education initiative, the 60 by 30 Texas. Next slide. This last piece is regarding our small business development centers. Delmar College does have an SBDC, and it's housed at the Center for Economic Development, led by Director Anne Frirova. They have 14 staff members, and they are dedicated to providing services to the 10 surrounding counties in the coastal bend area. Now, this policy change is for the SBDCs across the state. It's recommending that they move from Article III, where they are currently housed within the budget of education, and move that to Article VII, where it will be housed under Business and Economic Development. Our state leaders have felt for a long time that they are not receiving the attention, that they kind of get overwhelmed by everything happening within the education system, and they felt it would be better appropriated under Article VII and actually governed by the Texas Workforce Commission. So I will pause for now to see if you have any questions about the state legislative agenda.
Dr. Sherwood? Okay. I thought I saw her mic come on, sorry.
Friday in his LAR presentation that includes some facts about community colleges statewide. There were two or three kind of introductory pages. Would you send those along to the regents in your next regular update? I think that's good statewide information and good facts for regents to have about the importance of community colleges statewide. Just to give you a little taste, community colleges are the largest sector in higher education in Texas, and we educate 70% of all freshmen and sophomores in the state and provide 92% of all career and technical education enrollments and certificates. So there's some interesting facts that I think will be helpful to you all and just good to have in your back pocket, along with your pocket profile of Delmar College. These will be helpful for you in the days and months to come.
Absolutely. I can send those out today. Okay, if we don't have any other questions regarding the state agenda, I'd like to move over to our national.
Dr. Villarreal?
Yes.
Just a parting shot on the state agenda. Just know that this is a leaping off point. This is what we go into the session with. Never have we come out of the session with what we've gone into it. So just know that we're taking things very situationally. We have some baseline items for our agenda that we want to hold the ground on. There are possibilities of doing better, and I say that because the leadership has shown in recent years their support, their increasing support for community colleges. We remain optimistic yet realistic about the scenarios. But the reason I say that is because I've heard it directly from the leaderships at both sides of the aisle, both bodies at the Capitol, as well as the top leadership, that it's going to be community colleges that brings the Texas workforce back. So stay tuned, we'll see. Thank you, Dr. Villarreal.
And thank you for that. That is a great reminder that it is thanks to all of the advocacy work that is done, our students, by our SGA, when they go up with us for Community College Days, with you, our board, when you are able to meet with our local, state, and national officials. It is going a long way, and I think it says a lot about the relationships that are being built right now. Again, you're starting to hear the shift, the wording, the focus on adult learners, not only at the state but at the national level. So we're very excited to be part of this. Thank you, Dr. Eskemia, for leading us and making sure that this is part of our strategic plan as a college. So that being said, next page, please, and I'll move over to the national agenda. So the 117th National Congress. As you know, we are wrapping up. We've just finished our election. We are starting January 3rd of 2021, going until January of 2023 for the 117th. Michael Cloud, District 27, and Senator Cornyn will be back representing the state of Texas. We do have a strong relationship with our legislators, and we really hope to continue that advocacy work. Next slide. Now, because this is the 2020 national agenda, I wanted to go ahead and share it with you, but I look forward to seeing what shifts are going to happen in 2021, if any. There are three main areas of advocacy. And as you can see here, the two associations that we work with are the American Association of Community Colleges, which the college is a member of, and you as trustees are members of the Association of Community College Trustees. In 2019 and 2020, the national community college groups advocated for the reauthorization of the Higher Education Act. In fact, when Chairwoman Scott and I were there in February before the pandemic hit, we had the opportunity to hear from U.S. Senator Alexander and Murray talking about all the hard work they were going to do this spring to get that reauthorization act up to date. As you know, unfortunately, due to the pandemic, that was put on hold. So we're still hearing that they are slowly trying to move and update the Higher Ed Reauthorization Act. Appel grants for different groups are being considered, as well as enhancing data transparency at a national level. There's also a push to increase support in the workforce development area, which again is falling in line with the TRU initiative that we just mentioned at the state level. Also, ACC and ACCT do support the Dream Act to provide permanent legal status for individuals who entered the U.S. as minors. And so again, you will also have an opportunity to take part in some webinars, but also at the national level. This week, ACCT announced a three-part webinar to talk about the legislative priorities. Two will be live on November 12th and December 3rd, and then a previously recorded webinar is available for you to watch. So again, we will send those out to you, along with the webinar information for CAT, so that you can take part of those if you wish. So as the 117th kicks into gear and we receive information of a 2021 agenda, I will keep you posted on that as well. That is my report. Chairwoman Scott and Dr. Eskemia, if you have any questions.
Any other questions or comments from regents? I would like to request an affirmation, a vote of concurrence related to the state legislative agenda for the upcoming session. I think we can hold off on the federal, given as that is not yet finalized and usually is done in the late January timeframe anyway. And we can bring that back as a report item, but if the board is so inclined, would like to request a motion to concur or affirm the state legislative agenda.
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Regent Everett. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Same sign. That motion passes with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Six regents voting, is that right? Yeah, I think that's correct. Or seven regents voting. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Yeah, six regents voting, thank you. Okay. Thank you again, Dr. Villarreal, for bringing us up to date on those issues. And as always, if there are questions as you participate in these various webinars and conference calls, if you have questions directly related to our legislative or the state legislative piece, you are welcome to visit with Dr. Villarreal or Dr. Eskemia or myself, and we will attempt to answer your questions and get you engaged. There are some opportunities for regents to participate virtually. We think both Community College Days in Austin, as well as the ACC Legislative Conference that is typically in DC in February, will both be held virtually. So we will be looking for opportunities to capitalize on relationships and communications directly from regents and trustees around the state to our elected representatives, since we're not going to be able to do big en masse kind of gatherings. So look forward to those opportunities to work with you all on that. The next item on the agenda is related to an interlocal contract between Delmar College and the City of Corpus Christi regarding a police training academy. We're going to hold that item until after closed session, because there are a couple of updates regarding the contract negotiations for that, that we're going to discuss in closed session, and then we will come back and review that in full, in open session once we conclude. So at this point in time, if you'll allow me to read our closed session language, we're going to go into Texas Government Code, closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding pending or contemplated litigation or legal claims or settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session, and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending or contemplated legal matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session. And under Texas Government Code 551.087 regarding discussion or deliberation of information received from a business prospect from which the college is conducting economic development negotiations, and/or the deliberation of an offer, a financial or other incentive to a business prospect with possible discussion, action, open session. And under Texas Government Code 551.072 regarding deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 2:40 PM. We'll come back in about five minutes if we can get everybody. We'll clear the room and give you a chance to take a quick five-minute break. All right, we have come out of closed session at 3:37 PM. We do want to move on to action item number five, which will be a discussion, a presentation, discussion of possible action related to an interlocal contract between Delmar College and the City of Corpus Christi to construct the city's police training academy on college property. Dr. Eskemia, I'll ask you to tee this up for the public presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, regents, this is for your consideration on an interlocal agreement with the City of Corpus Christi slash Corpus Christi Police Department. This is an opportunity to partner with the Corpus Christi Police Department from an educational standpoint and take police training into the future, and to be the leaders of police training in new ways that really set the bar at standards that I think the entire country will be looking at. I've been working very closely with both City Manager Peter Zanoni, as well as Chief Markle, Mike Markle, on this, and it conforms, this item for your consideration conforms both with the physical proximity and the overall planning standards of the south side location, as well as the educational offerings here at the college, particularly in the criminal justice, police training facet of the curriculum. That being said, Mr. Strabos, are you back with us? I didn't see him. Jessica? He signed off, and he's trying to get back on right now. As he's trying to get back on, we will, he had the details that I needed for the technical parts. We'll wait for Mr. Strabos to get back on. He stepped off and probably should have stayed on, I apologize. Let me see where he is. One second, please. See, get him back signed on. Well, as, hang on, regents, bear with me. Got to get the, I know he's trying to sign back on right now. I wanted him to talk about the technical aspects of this placement. John, are you there? So Augie, Mr. Rivetta, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay. While Mr. Strabos is coming, can you give us the rundown on the, we'll start with the contract aspects of this and then go into the technical part.
Let me say this, regents, you were provided with a draft interlocal lease agreement that contains the material terms of the proposed arrangement with the city. Key terms include the length of the term, as well as what's being exchanged in terms of consideration. It's kind of a unique deal, but it's the kind that's contemplated under the interlocal act that authorizes public-public agreements. The benefits that are flowing both ways are really extraordinary for this type of relationship. And so, but again, as I said, the city, as we understand it, is this very afternoon, also simultaneously considering the proposal. So we don't know whether the terms of the agreement or the form of the agreement is exactly the way it's going to be, but the material terms are there. And my recommendation would be that if you're inclined to approve this, I'm putting the carpet for the horse, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, but if you're inclined to approve this, you may do so by approving the material terms as outlined, but then authorizing Dr. Eskemia and staff to negotiate the final details. One provision of note, 5.03 of the proposed interlocal agreement does keep control over the type of structure that goes up within the approval of the college. And I know that's important to you, and it was important, Dr. Eskemia, to make sure that whatever is constructed out there, and wherever it is constructed, is consistent with the overall aesthetics of the buildings, of the campus, and that it complements it, rather than contradict it. But that's why that provision is in there as well. I wanted to commend that to your attention.
Mr. Strabos, can you talk about the technical aspects of the building and the processes that we've gone through in working with the design?
Yes, sorry about that, I was having a problem with controls. I'm back now. So we've met with the city manager, the chief of police, city staff, and they're very aware that the building aesthetics architecturally has to fit within the overall view of the campus. And they're very aware of the firm that we've used, Turner Ramirez, and their key architects. And they've been involved in, as well as both helping to locate the proposed site, as well as the concept of the building. We're aware of the ballparks of the city budget, what these buildings would look like, potential footprint. And so, Delmar College will have final approval of all aspects of the building, where it's finally located, what its architectural aesthetics are, and all the aspects of the building with respect to it. And the key piece, a different way to think about this project is, it's like a specialized classroom building, like the QLRT Arts Building. This is a specialized law enforcement building. It's not a police station, it's a law enforcement training academy building.
Ms. Strabos? Madam Chair, that's our description of the agenda item at this point. We'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Hutchinson?
I want to make sure I understand what we're delegating. I understand that we would be approving the bones of this agreement, and that design, would that come back to us first, or is that something we're delegating?
So the idea, John, go ahead, John, you turned on your mic.
My recommendation is that we work with the city and the architects, and we refine these renderings, that it's one thing to look at a box on a piece of land and say, well, this is ugly, or we just don't like it. It does not communicate the full impact of the project. I think the architects do their architectural work and bring back some renderings, even some different options for Delmar College to review, and we can request that from the city and get their input on this, because it's critical that as a partnership, we have something that everyone likes. That if the city forges ahead, but it doesn't work for us, then it's not going to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think we can work with architects, have them come up with some better renderings and some different options that can show what they would look like, both in the front footprint size, as well as show what they would look like compared to the other buildings that are adjacent to this, and get some more feedback from the city about what they'll be doing in the building. And the city has some basic programming. So I believe that part of the next step, before we come to the final document, would be renderings and more detailed information that can bring back to the board of regents for their approval.
That's what I'm looking for. You're going to bring it back to the, but when you say come back to us, you mean us, not?
The Board of, Delmar College Board of Regents to review these proposed renderings.
Perfect. Thank you, John.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Salinas, you have a question?
Yes. Do we have a Plan B? In other words, like if it doesn't work too well there on campus, like that, do we have a Plan B? Because in Rayford Junior College, I'll tell you what, they had the same thing on campus. Well, I told the athletic director, I said, I mean, you could hear the bullet go, you know? And he said, no, no, no. And so I went ahead and I took all the shells and left them in his debt. I said, we picked them up from the baseball.
So...
So, I'm just saying that they ended up going out of the radio.
I got that.
There's no shooting range here.
There will not be a shooting range.
There is no shooting range, and there is no driving range. It's academic classes only. And so, they'll do physical therapy. They'll do training, but they're not going to have any, any guns. They're not going to do any shooting on this location at all. And they're not doing any driving on this location.
Yep.
No shooting then?
No shooting, no driving.
No, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Not, not like golf driving, driving the vehicles that the test.
Driving vehicles. They're not going to have a police driving their vehicles.
Yeah.
Training track.
Yeah. And the other thing, we are talking about armed police officers that are training. So, they, just like they do in security anywhere in the world, they can carry their guns in their jurisdictions and so forth. So, there will be guns, as there are currently on this campus and every campus, just, just to be clear.
So, our current, my question is, our current, I'm sorry, Mr. Salinas, were you finished?
Yes.
Thank you. So, we currently have training agreements with the city on both firefighting, as well as police academy predominantly on our west campus. So, what differentiates what we're doing, potentially doing on this new campus, this new location, from what's happening on our west campus?
So, the fire departments, we are, we are integrated with the fire training departments almost completely. Their curriculum is our curriculum. We are most integrated there. We are currently, our police training academy is separate from the Corpus Christi Police Department Academy currently. We train regionally for T-Cole certification and peace, and general peace officers licenses on our west campus. The police department is now looking to, to bring those two together and to create the type of partnership that we have with the fire department to bring the police departments more closely together in alignment, both curriculum, training, and all of those other things. So, the goal is to look more similar to what the fire department currently has with Delmar College.
So, we have generalized training right now in, in that area of law enforcement, and then they go on to the City of Corpus Christi to get specialized training for whatever the city is requiring for their officers.
So, yes, and our training department, our police department, our cadets that go out, they, we usually do the basic training for the smaller cities who can afford their own academies and those sorts of things. That's primarily where our students go. Now, some of our students go through our academy and the CCPD academy. But so, this is, this is bringing an integration. I must also say, and I, I need to say this, that going back to past several chiefs, this discussion has been long developing over the past 12 years, from Chief Garrett to Chief Riggs to Chief Simpson, and now Chief Markle. So, so, this is the, the firmest, the most solid step forward to bringing those two curriculums together and those two programs together. And so, again, it's, it's about moving in the direction that we have with Corpus Christi Fire Department.
Other questions or comments from the board? So, I think I'm going to try to restate what I heard a moment ago, that staff would like us to pass a motion to agree to the material terms of the agreement as outlined, and to authorize Dr. Eskamia to negotiate the final agreement with the city. Is there someone who would be willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Adami.
A second.
Mr. Salinas seconds that motion? Thank you. So, we, and we heard earlier with the, the understanding that we are going to see the board, Regents will see the, the final renderings and plans before, before they begin construction. Are there any other questions or comments related to this item? I'm going to do a roll call vote, please. So, unmute your mics. Regent Adami?
Yes.
Thank you. Regent Everett?
Yes.
Regent Bennett?
Yes.
Regent Garza?
Yes.
Regent Hutchinson?
Yes.
Regent Salinas?
Yes.
Regent Sherwood?
Yes.
I'm Regent Scott. We have a unanimous vote in favor. Thank you all very much, and thank you, staff, for, for bringing this forward to us. We look forward to a productive and a long partnership with the City of Corpus Christi on the police academy.
Thank you, Regents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We don't have any other items coming out of closed session that require action today. We do have a brief opportunity to talk about our calendaring upcoming. The, the opportunity to canvas votes from the most recent election will occur on Friday. Is that correct? And do we have Regents prepared to do that? Dr. Sherwood and Ms. Everett are the two Regents who will be canvassing the votes. Very good. Thank you. And then, our regularly scheduled December meeting will be
The 8th.
The 8th of December. We will have a workshop session. We'll have an opportunity at that meeting to say thank you and farewell to Dr. Sherwood and thank her for her service to Delmar College and our students. And we will have the swearing-in of our newest Regent, Dr. Lori Turner, on that day as well. And so, you'll be getting the details about the timing of all of that. I encourage all of you, if you haven't recorded your congratulations for graduation, that will occur virtually on December 11th. So, record your congratulations and send that in to Natalie or to Lorette Williams so that we can include that in our virtual graduation broadcast. As previously stated, we will not have a January meeting, but we'll meet again as a full board on Tuesday, February 9th. Anything else for calendar? Dr. Eskamia?
You've covered it, Madam Chair.
All right. If we've forgotten anything, then I'm sure Delia or Natalie will be getting in touch with us. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and with that, we are adjourned at 3:53 PM.